Starting with the town hall meeting, a little less formal than usual, but still just as much fun, right?
Yeah, really.
So what we're here tonight to talk about is Issue 18, concentrating on the income tax proposed for November for the roads. Kind of what we wanted to do is stop some of the rumors that were out there, answer some of the questions that we've heard in the past, and start to put our best foot forward to show what our intentions are if this law were to pass and why we need it. So I've asked the engineering department and finance department to put together some of their thoughts and a plan that we received back in November of 2015, and how we would utilize those funds. So without further ado, I will hand it off to Mr. Gigliotti, our city engineer.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Molnar. I'll reiterate some of the things that we discussed earlier. I've put together a memo with what would be a preliminary plan or a suggested plan of action to be put into place if the proposed income tax increase were to pass and become a reality. I won't go through every detail of the memo, but I'll try to sum it up here for you and then open it up for questions. The income tax increase were to pass, it would bring in approximately a million dollars per year earmarked for roads. What we would then do is take that money and create an annual citywide pavement maintenance program. That would consist of repairing items such as catch basins, crossover drainage culverts, ditch improvements where needed, also items of curb repairs, spot pavement repairs, and pavement striping as well. I think all falls into that category. And the other thing that we would do with the money, obviously, is pave roads and pave as many roads as we can. The memo contains a preliminary list of roads that we would be looking at. Basically, it's a list taken from the current pavement condition ratings report that everyone has seen. It's online. I would note that as far as the condition of the roads is concerned, we would continue to monitor the condition of the roads and prioritize or reprioritize roads as needed as to the order in which we would repave roads. And also, I think that the paving of the roads would be coordinated with several other outside factors, timing it up with outside funding sources, timing it up with other work such as water main replacements, grouping roads together geographically, and also just keeping in mind that some roads will deteriorate at a different rate than others. They don't all deteriorate at the exact same rate. So those are just items to keep in mind as we prioritize paving of the roads. I would also go on to say that if this were to pass and there was a million dollars a year earmarked for road work, I would view the million dollar price tag as the break-even or tread-water dollar amount to be invested on an annual basis to maintain the citywide condition of our roads here. If we were to spend less than a million dollars in a year, I think that the overall condition of the roads citywide would deteriorate. And if we were able to spend more than a million, then we can improve the overall citywide condition. So I think it's important to keep that dollar amount in mind as we move forward. And I guess the last thing that I would note, and it's not really contained in the memo, although I think we've touched on it before, previous meetings, just want to clarify some of the stormwater questions. Stormwater kind of falls under two categories. One part of stormwater improvements being improvements that are incidental to maintaining a road, catch basin repairs, crossover culverts, ditch improvements, all that type of stuff, which is a part of the road. It's important. Those items are important to maintaining the road. All of those items are included with the memo, with our preliminary plan here. Other stormwater improvements, I guess I view as standalone, stormwater improvements, which are not a part of this memo, not a part of this preliminary plan. That is because we know now that the funding source for those stormwater improvements is NEORSD's stormwater management plan and fee. And I, some examples of those, of course, are Our Lady of Guadalupe, the Indian Creek corridor study, and Sulaiman Culver. And with that, I would turn it over to if there are any questions or if we'd like to discuss it anymore, I'd love to.
I think what we'd like to do is have Ms. Hall give her a report, and then we can open it up, just in case she may answer some of the questions that arise.
Okay. As everybody knows, the quarter percent increase is not a permanent tax. It's a 10-year tax. We're expecting it to generate about 10 and a half million dollars over the 10-year period. This number could change depending upon, there's other communities that have an increase in income tax on their ballot. So if that, those other communities, if they pass, then potentially, City of Macedonia would get less money because we give 100% credit. So say, for example, if somebody is working in the City of Cleveland and theirs is going to go up to 2.5%, ours would potentially go up to 2.25%. We would give 100% credit, and therefore, we would receive nothing from the tax filer in addition. Right now, retirees would not pay local income tax on any of their social security or any of their pensions. They don't pay taxes on interest and dividends. If a retiree was employed, say, at Walmart, a greeter, or had a part-time job, if you get W-2 wages, or you have any scheduled income from rental property, farm income, business income, if you get a business distribution, or if you have lottery winnings, those would be subject to the local income tax addition. If you make $150,000 a year, the taxes on those would be about $125,000. I wish. If you had made $50,000 a year, your taxes would be an additional $125 per year. Something to keep in mind as well is, right now, based on the 2015 tax filers for, through the Regional Income Tax Agency, for the city, 80% of our income tax money comes from non-residents. So it's people like myself that work here but don't live here. So less than 20% of the income tax revenue comes from our residents. Of the tax filers for the City of Macedonia, 1,290 residents will not be affected by this income tax increase. That means they work already in a 2.25% community or higher. So if the City of Cleveland were to be increased to 2.5%, that number would be increased by 760 of our tax filers, making the total of 2,050 residents or tax filers that would not be affected. And just to give you an idea, the North Randall has a rate of 2.75%. Warrensville Heights is at 2.6%. Euclid is at 2.85%. And Parma Heights is at 3%. Akron is at 2.25% already, and they're looking to increase that to 2.5%. And the City of Cleveland is also looking for a 2.5% increase for them as well. For the last five years, the funds that have been paid out for road and stormwater projects, 2016, we've only paid out $129,544. We did pay out an additional $201,000 this year, but it related to 2015 expenditures that had already been done, so we had to make the payments this year. 2015, we paid $1,474,000, $1,474,245. That includes that $201,000 that was paid this year, but it was for last year's expenditures. 2014, we paid out $481,145. 2013 was $1,906,273. And 2012, we spent $719,810 on road and stormwater projects. Something else to keep in mind, if this increase passes, it is the city's money for, specifically for roads and stormwater projects. So this money would go into a specific fund for a specific purpose. It would not go into the general fund for the city's discretion to be used wherever. It would either have its own fund, or we would put it in the Street Construction Maintenance Repair Fund and have the street projects and any road repairs coming out of that fund, or we would have it in, going directly into a capital fund for that specific. Wherever we put it, it will not be in the general fund. If this does not pass, the city could revert back to 2010 where we had layoffs and where we weren't replacing retirees. You know, and I was, I was just looking at, if we were to lay off so many individuals from a certain department, what would that equate to? In coming up with the numbers, if we laid off at least 10, about 10 firemen out of 25 total employees, fire department employees, that's what would equate to about a million dollars? Or 10 police department employees out of 26. We have, and this is full-time employees, don't forget. The service department has 19 full-time employees. We would have to lay off 13 to 14 of them to get to $1 million. Now, we can obviously, you know, make a combination of their, all these different departments, but it would, it would hurt. You know, finally, this year, we did have some replacements from 2010 layoffs, so we were just kind of starting to rebound. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mark, was there anything you wanted to add to what we've discussed so far? I know there were some ballot questions that's been...
Yeah, nothing really to add, other than we have the ballot language has been approved, and the language that should appear on the ballot, I'll read it. It will be, shall the ordinance providing for a 1/4% levy increase on income for the purpose of road improvements and stormwater project for a period of 10 years, beginning January 1, 2017, be passed? So that's the exact language that the voters will consider on November 8.
Okay. It's pretty straightforward.
Yes, sir.
I guess we'll open it up to the audience. Anyone with other comments? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Anyone?
My question to Rhonda is...
Can you call it so we can...
Can you say my name there?
No, just Sam, he can ask you first.
Just ask.
My name's Jessica Brandt. I live on Blue Jay Trail, and I just wanted to know how much it'll free up of the existing budget to have a dedicated road budget.
Well, right now, we transfer over a million dollars to the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund just to support that fund. So it could potentially, it won't probably eliminate all of it, but right now, as the engineer has stated, our service department is right now doing some patchwork and some maintenance, so it would alleviate that, I would think. But I, dollar number, I'm not exactly, yes, it really is.
That's a fantastic question, because it, you know, it's hard to say, because you don't know how much work can be done, you know, until it gets passed. But, you know, we do have some equipment that we purchased this year for our service department to go out and fix smaller projects, and that would be part of one big fund now, where they can use that equipment a lot wiser.
I'll take a little macro approach, and I've talked about this before, but I think it's important, because it was brought up in the last meeting during public comments, that to live within our means. And it's tough when I hear that, because I've been up here for almost 10 years, and Dave and Jan, I think you guys have counted by a few too, but we've always looked at our budget and tried to keep things as tight as possible. Property tax in this town has not been raised since 1963. I call that living within your means. We've gotten to a point now where our expenses are getting higher, and we need to catch up to them. One of those major expenses are our roads. The estimation right now is we actually have around $28 million in roads to be repaired. We're coming to the residents asking for $10 million over 10 years to help repair some of our worst streets. Those streets are in such poor condition, something we talked about in the room there, it's called a PCR rating, pavement condition rating. It's an engineering standard supported by ODOT that tells you what condition your road is. It's given a number, I think it's 0 to 100, correct? And you rate your roads by that. So right now, we've got around 20 roads that are rated in very poor or poor condition. That's not a good, it's not a good look to have, when your roads are deteriorating that bad and crumbling. Back in around 2008, the economy obviously fell on dark times, and that affected us as well. Government usually catches up a little later. We made a lot of cuts that we still haven't caught up from. A lot of police, police department, I know we made some layoffs, service department, fire department, those people, we're still not to the numbers we were in 2005. Last time I checked, we were still below those numbers. So we have lived within our means. There are expenses that come out that are touted by some as being non-necessary. Those are things that are put into budget, voted on, and approved. We utilize our funds as best possible. I can tell you, we go over a budget for months at a time to figure out where we need to be and what we have and what we can do going forward. At this time, we're at a crossroads. No one up here denies the fact that we need more funding for our roads. There's not a person that's going to deny that. We, as a council, presented an option in the last election, and we were told 3 to 1, that's not what we wanted, and we hear you. But unfortunately, this is the need, not a want. We have to come back with another viable option. That's why we have Issue 18 before you, and this is why we're giving all the information. The biggest thing that sticks out in my mind, and what I hope sticks in most people's mind is, over 80% of the income tax is received from non-residents. Now, it doesn't mean we want to stick it to anyone who works in town, that's not what we're after, but those folks also drive on our roads. They should share in the cost of repairing them. That's all we're trying to say with that. $50,000, we're asking you for $125 a year. That's it. So...
Nick, I want to expand on what you said about living within our means. Because, you know, like you said, this is my first time doing a budget, and I looked through it over and over to see, you know, if what, you know, what I was going to be voting on. This is what we did. We hired a new financial director to replace the old one. We still had to pay out the old one. We hired a new engineering firm that's roughly the same as the old engineering firm. Replaced one policeman, and we hired one new one to put in the schools. We hired four, four part-time service department guys to help fix our roads. We hired one new IT director, whose salary is basically, is going to save us over the next years more money than it's costing us, because we no longer have to subcontract out any IT. We replaced two dispatchers that were promised over the years past. We did hire nine, or hired six firemen, three more are coming, but we got that paid for from contracting with other cities. We replaced the head custodian, because the old one retired. We did create a new position for zoning inspector, but we also had our building commissioner left, and our Dennis Sacks, who was the assistant building commissioner, he retired. And we hired a part-time building commissioner. That's it. And all those are within, well within what we needed in the city. I mean, an IT guy is, is, you know, you need something that to keep moving forward. So there's not one of these positions that I would say are outside of the realm of, you know, what we needed to move forward, but I just wanted to point that out and kind of expand on what you said about living within our means. It just happens that we end up short when you count all the money that we get in from income tax to pave the roads. My eliminating any of those positions would, you know, especially the safety forces, would compromise our safety. If you eliminate any of the service director or any of the service guys, you know, we're not going to get any of the projects that we get done currently. They're going to take longer. You think those dugouts took long to put in? Imagine, you know, those guys get taken off that job. That's why it doesn't get done in a timely manner, because they start something, and they have to go do 10 other things before they can get back to it, because there's just not enough guys. But with, with that being said, I mean, we do try to analyze every dollar that we spend. You know, and we just came up short to do any of the roads this year, and we're hoping that this presents somewhat of a solution moving forward. And I want to comment, and this is kind of often, you know, it's very important that we pave the poor and very poor roads, of course. But just as important is putting money to do preventative measures, because you have roads that you can prolong their life, and you don't run into this, in this problem. You don't have this many roads you have to pave at once, and you can get it under control, and hopefully, in 10 years, that will be the case, and we can let this, let this 2.5 expire. And that, and that's the goal. And I hope that's the goal of everyone up here, but that's my goal, is to get a plan in place that we can, you know, expand on over the next 10 years that will satisfy a road maintenance plan. I can't tell me how many times I said that during the campaign, we need to have a viable road maintenance plan, and here's a chance to have one for the next 10 years. And I, I just hope people understand that. It's not a money grab. It is, it is, and what Rhonda said, it's something that's going to go right to the roads. It's not going to go to any other place. So it's not a, it's not a, you know, it's not going to be spent on anything else other than fixing our roads. And I hope people understand that. So I'm sorry, I kind of got off track there, Nick. Thanks, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
And to expand on what you're saying, part of the $10 million, $4.25 million of that's going to go to our annual maintenance. We've never had a, what I would consider appropriate maintenance program, because we just haven't had the funding to do it. With this, we prolong the roads that are in decent shape now and extend their life five, 10, maybe 15 years, that aren't traveling on as frequently, so we don't get to the point of being in very poor, poor condition. That's part of the thought with that. Another rumor that was out in the last election, or for the last issue, was that, you know, the budget was increased by $1.5 million. I think Kevin touched on at least a half dozen to a dozen items that, you know, was included in that $1.5 million. But what was also forgotten is, we didn't have a finance director for over a year. That person was paid out. I'm not going to keep pointing backwards, but, you know, the, the budget that was prepared at the time was not good. It was defunct at best. The, the carryover that was projected was $2.5 million. It ended up being significantly less. And in that budget, there was 52 amendments in the year. When you make an amendment, it's because there's a problem, or there's something else that needs funding. So those 52 amendments accounted for a lot of that money. That $1.5 million is a shocking number, but when you look at it from the perspective of having a budget that didn't work and wasn't working, to where we're at now with a professional in place who is keeping us high and tight, that's why we are where we are. It's not an increase in spending of a million and a half dollars. That's not it at all. What we did was, we tightened up our belts and got back on track. So I wanted to put that out there for folks to know.
Is there anybody else that wants to comment from the audience?
Karen Berlosi, Driftwood. I believe in the maintenance program, but that cuts it for about a million dollars for the roads. So $425,000 out of a million goes for PM, which is great, but now you prolong the poor, very poor roads from getting done, because you are capping it like a million dollars. Now, you mentioned, somebody mentioned about county roads, getting some money, because they're county roads.
Yeah, we do. Well, there's something called a permissive license tax fee. We get about, annually, that's going to bring us somewhere in the range of, let's see, about $70,000.
So that's because you said Shepherd, Valley View, which are the high ones in here that's going to cost the most.
Well, these are county roads only, and they are actually designated, I didn't bring my list with me, but yes, there's five roads.
But I mean, we can put in for some of that money, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And we are?
I assume we are.
And we are now?
As soon as we get a contract going. We would have to get reimbursed.
We have to. We do have to have a project.
So that leaves Karen some of the big ones, like Valley View's like $800,000. I believe in the PM, I really do. But then I also want to know, my road's not gone five years down the road, because half the money's going to PM.
Absolutely. And I know that Driftwood is close to the top of the list, and I can understand.
Well, I'm just talking about anybody.
I know, but, you know, there's different ways to do it, and, you know, I, I mentioned you bundle the roads close together. And so if you have roads that one's very poor, and you have two around it that are poor, or one's very poor, you might want to do them all at the same time. But with that said, and there's different ways you could bond some of the money, and we go, spend a million dollars a year, but like you said, it cuts it down to $600,000. So hopefully, we can do the most, and maybe Joe can expand on what I'm saying. It's more than in one way that you can get the million dollars. You can take that money and bond it, and so you can do the very, very poor roads first, and the poor roads right behind it.
You can do that for just a year, two, or three to bond, not the whole thing, right? That's another option? Okay, now, just, that just brings us into effect that this really needs to be passed, because of $425,000 for PM, we still need the money for the roads, so...
No, it's 4.2 million. That's how significant the preventative advantage is.
It's a 10-year.
Okay, that's interesting, I'm sorry.
Right, but I'm saying yearly, but I mean saying it's...
I'm not talking overall.
If $425 a year is for that, we really need to pass this, because I need the other $600,000 to the roads. So I appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I know there's options that you guys brought.
And you don't want to, you don't want to do a road that you could possibly get county money for?
That's what, right.
You know, so you want to, you want to make sure that you're doing all, you know, you want to make, try to reach the tax dollars even further by doing that.
I didn't know that until today about Shepherd and...
Yes.
Does that, I mean, does that answer what I said about being a...
Yeah, no, Mr. Bilkey, I think you're right on point there, absolutely. You know, and obviously, the order of the roads can change. We go for outside funding. If we get outside funding, that's more roads that we can pave, dig deeper into the list. You know, and I think to the point about Driftwood, which we know is not in very good shape at all, I think that's to the point of the overall citywide condition of the roads, that Driftwood is not even the first or second or third road on the list. In a lot of towns, it is...
I'm not talking about mine, we're talking about the top two.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand.
Absolutely.
We'll be put in that, because of the maintenance costs that we need to. I don't care what roads, if it's poor, it's poor, I don't care who it is.
Anyone else?
I saw a couple other hands go up.
I'm sorry.
John Leaven, 1066 Berkshire. I kept hearing over and over and over again, we have no money for roads. Someone calls in, wants something repaired, we have no money for roads. Yet we're out there doing some work. So apparently, there's some money for roads somewhere. Okay? Explain that to me.
Well, at the beginning of the year, it was budgeted, and maybe Ron can expand on what was budgeted portion to the service guys.
I think he's referring to the bigger part. Are you referring to like Route 82 and things like that?
No, just some of the repairs that are, that are being done or have been done this year.
Can you give me an example? I'm just trying to understand which ones you're referring to.
Well, I don't have a specific street in mind, but there have been some repairs that were done this year, correct?
Well, like the Route 82 expansion, that's obviously been in the works for many, many years. But a lot of the things that the service department's doing is just, we're doing little patches. It's not, we put some money in there, and it wasn't a whole lot, but I believe it was less than $100,000, and that just barely covers materials. And by the way, we've blown through it. I know our service department did something around 15, 16 catch basins this year, and I think there's around 50 that need repair, and we're out of money. So that's just one example of, somewhere else, we could push some of that money into those, those areas to get those things done.
But there hasn't been any road, major roads projects done this year?
No side, no interior roads.
Other than 82, that type of thing. Okay.
What's we're paying for?
Now, in this, which is now $10,000, which was 15 before, and I think you kind of explained what, the reason for that change. We're talking about, some of the streets are in bad shape, they're on this, in this list. Okay. There, there is discussion, or rumor, or whatever, that there's considerations for rotaries going in? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's on the five-year plan.
It's on the five-year plan. No, it's the five...
That's a, that's a, that's a major...
But the five-year plan is not approved. The five-year plan is not going to approve. We don't have the money. In fact, in the five-year plan for the first year, I think we took just the fire, that was it. We didn't have the money. So we have a five-year plan, but that's not committed money. That is the request that the department heads bring in, saying, this is what we need to continue the efforts of the city to be the best. But unless we have the money, it's not happening.
It seems to be true.
Yeah, the reason, reason why I was concerned about it, is that rotaries are very expensive. You got to buy land, you got to do all this, you got to close for a while. It's a very, very expensive proposition. And I'm seeing it. I kind of like them somewhat. They have their own issues, but that's, that's a heck of a lot of money to be put into any road, to make things a little bit better, when you've got a list like this of roads that are bad. And I was kind of fighting this for, for a bit. I'm trying to be a little bit more open-minded about, about doing this. I've already said twice, in front of this microphone, I don't support it. I'm trying to be, open my mind, look at all this stuff, and see what I can do to, to change my mind or be considerate of it.
So by road, you mean roundabout? Is that the same?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, that's what I, I, you looked at, like I was a Darren Headlights, rotary, I'm not sure, but I know that we applied for a grant, and, you know, and a lot of times, you just want to get on a list, and, you know, the chances... you just wanna get on a list and, you know, the chances of, and, you know, if we get the money, we might not be able to use it because we don't have the money to match it, but we wanna be able to rank the projects so in the years to come, if we do apply for it again, then they already know what we need to improve to get the money from, you know, I believe that that was the Ohio Works that we applied to. Um, so it is a method to the madness a little bit where it does look like we're trying to do a bunch of these projects, but, you know, from our engineering department, their department and their experience, you start applying for the grants years at a dance before you get them. And then if you do get them, you know, then you kind of have, come up with some decisions if you have the money to do at that time. So I, I'd hope that makes sense because that's how it was explained to me.
It's 3.6 million, give or take, for two roundabouts that's in the five-year plan. One is at Highland and, uh, Valley View, and the other is called the Town Center Roundabout, which is the more expensive one, is $3 million. Uh, when you look across here in this plan, uh, it's, it's, it's just incredible because the totals here are 30, you know, try to get 36.6 million, uh, across the board for all of this, which of course is way beyond anything that we're even talking about here. But in addition of the levy for the Recreation Center and Parks, is gonna be a $20 million levy over a period of 20 years.
Right.
And so if you add those two together, we're talking 56.6 million dollars that we're looking to get from somewhere, and it's not going to happen, I don't think. So even with, uh, even if we apply, we did apply on, uh, Ledge Road for a section of Ledge, uh, in a joint effort with, uh, Northfield Village, and I don't know if anything has happened there in terms of, that was an OPWC item, right?
Yeah, that was also an OPWC application. We, we're yet to hear back, um, the results of, of those applications.
Well, that one, uh, is one I voted for because, uh, you know, I think that particular area really does need repair. And there are some other areas that need repair that have been identified. We, we have about 21% of our roads in the older areas particularly, that are in a, either a very poor, poor or fair to poor condition. And we have about 17, almost 18% of our roads that are in fair condition, and about 61% are in absolutely good or very good condition. And the, uh, what was mentioned earlier about, uh, a program of maintenance is something that we should do in any case, whether this levy passes or not, uh, in my opinion, because we do need to prevent deterioration and that is a very significant issue. When I look at the numbers that Rhonda gave for what we spent in, in 2012 through 2015, it's averaging a little over a million a year. And, uh, what's that?
On roads and stormwater.
And, uh, which is what this levy's about, so somehow, you know, it's, it's interesting to me because our revenue streams are actually, they did peak in 2013 because we had a little bump from the residual, from that, uh, extra quarter percent that we had placed on as emergency tax. But in general, we're, we're about, we're really, uh, we were averaging about a s- 7 million before the recession, and we're averaging now between 8.3 and 8.5 million annually out of income tax. So our revenue streams of, uh, in terms of income tax have been very robust. I believe there are other ways that we can address this. Uh, we did add a lot of cost to our, uh, operations this year, which I know some people believe were essential, I personally don't think so. There, and I will be happy to list everything that has increased this budget, but the total picture is it's about one and a half million more for operations this year than it was in either 2014 or 2015. And I think that because of that, we are strapped on our financials for doing roads in general. That's my view. But, uh, in any case, uh, I think the, the five-year plan and this 20 million in addition for this idea of, you know, the, the recreation parks funding, I think that's where we are driving a pretty long, uh, process of, of putting, uh, a heavy tax burden on our residents. I do think we need to think about what we're doing and how we're doing it, and I would call it rethink some of these, these ideas that we have placed in this plan, let's put it that way.
Good question. Um, as we move forward with this, let's assume for a moment that this passes, um, I think I heard that there were, you go after bond money?
You could.
Obviously, we would want to, yes.
You could do a portion of it, to do the very poor, poor roads, um, you know, to get those roads paved immediately. Um, it depends on, you know, the other funding sources that we get. Um, as soon as it passes, we probably start applying for other, other revenue. Um, if that comes in quicker, then we could probably bump up those roads. So we don't wanna handcuffs ourselves, or, I mean, I mean, Joe was very, when I put a plan together, he's like, well, you don't really wanna nail down a date because those things do change. So there's more than one way to do it, uh, but bonding, a combination of collecting it, paying it annually, bonding a portion of it so you can do a group of roads first and then have money for, you know, for maintenance over that same period. Um, the, I mean, I, that, I asked that question, you know, just in that room before you came in here, or before we came in here, and so that was the answer that was given.
So doesn't, doesn't that put us in debt?
Yes.
You know, right, right off the bat?
Well, it does, yes, that's correct, it does.
You would, you would use the levy to pay off the bond.
Okay.
And so it depends, and I, I think I said that in my answer was, depends what the rate and interest rate is. And you wanna be smart with every dollar that you spend, but you also wanna make sure that roads are safe too. And just like Karen's concern was, you know, we only have $600,000 now to do these roads. So you wanna do what's best and make sense by, by coming up with, you know, this is how it's going to be done, by bonding some portion of it and spending some portion on it annually.
And I would like to add that you would only bond an amount that you will pay off within the 10-year period.
Right.
With that money that you would get from that 10-year period. You're not gonna overextend and bond out extra dollars.
Okay, all right. Um, that's all for now, I'm sure I'll have more.
Cause one other thing, one other thing to note here, the, we're talking about the funding sources like EMATs and OPWC, and I can, I know from experience with them that you're not very likely to get those dollars. And we're talking about interior roads, which is very, very difficult to get any funding for. I'd say your chances are probably 10%. I, I mean, it's very rare that you're gonna get a lot of money. We even talked about some of the, the funding sources that are presented here, and I think he said we were second highest on the list to not get money. So we've, we've exhausted those avenues at this point.
That was almost...
Another thing to note, the five-year plan that was presented, and when we do this, that is not the five-year plan that we have in place. When, when we put it all on the table, we said, put everything, your wishes and your desires and your thoughts and everything you could ever think of in a perfect world and throw it all on the table. It keeps being touted as, we're gonna put a million dollar roundabout, we're gonna buy a million dollars, no, that's not it. We have another finance meeting coming up, and when we do, I'm gonna suggest to the Chair, Mrs. Tully, that we blow that document up so that can be stopped being used by the adversaries as something that we're gonna waste money, but that's not true. It was said, in a perfect world and everything was going great, this is what we would wanna do. Not just go blow money.
Something was...
Not just go blow money anywhere we want, that's...
Don't block the microphone, we're on...
Yeah, we, we back up. If you like the Sony phone, remember. But that's not our intention. It, it's, we put everything on the table to talk about it. It's not something we're gonna do. I, I'm, I'm appalled that it keeps being brought up that it's just, you know, we talk about throw it all on the table. I believe you said that, correct?
Right.
So, we're not spending that money. We don't have that money. How would we do that? That's just, it's, it's unrealistic.
Even when we, um, hit the economic situation before, we still had a five-year capital plan, we still had a five-year, what would we like to see, knowing that we were gonna lay people off, knowing that our unions agreed to a 0% raise, we still had a five-year plan. You know, there was discussion that it would turn around, and so when it turns around, you'll have the money. However, it was also noted that cities take a minimum of two years to start recouping dollars from a recession. So we start to recoup and then we start losing state funding. I mean, there's been a real balance. There's no one up here who's created a plan to just go spend money. Those department heads, when they put the plan forth, know it's a wish list. It's kinda like the Santa list, hoping you may have the money. Now, are they putting things on there that we don't need? Absolutely not. They're putting things on there the city needs, the problem is, we don't have the money. Where, I, I guess the question I would ask for those people who are kind of on the fence, where would you get the money from? Where would you get a million dollars to do roads? We don't have 60% of our roads in good condition, I just counted them.
Yes, we, definitely PCR ratings.
We have a lot of issues with, excuse me.
PCR ratings.
Excuse me. We have a lot of our roads that are, if drive them, drive Shepherd, drive the roads over. We, we did some roads last year we did not have the money for, but we were told that we did have the money. That's part of the issue that we're still battling. I was blessed that Berkshire, the speed bump road, as we used to call it, because of the way the road was put in, the sand underneath went down, and because it's a hill, so it became every two feet a speed bump. I was blessed that that was done. I wasn't on council at the time that it was done. But now the bottom is terrible, and we already did that once, but we didn't have the money to keep it maintained for Berkshire to grow. That's part of the issue you have here is the plan of how do I not only fix roads, but how do I keep them maintained so that the good roads don't slide very quickly down to the poor, for the very poor? We did some really, roads that hadn't been touched since the 60s last year, but we didn't do them all. As Karen can tell you, we didn't do them all. And I always had said, maybe we just let them go back to be gravel. So you really gotta take a look at, and, and I'm gonna be impacted, both my husband and I, I'm gonna be impacted by this. Do I wanna pay for roads? I've thought about what are the options? We assess you. You want your road fixed, you get assessed. So don't we have to go back like a year or two, cause how do you make that equitable that everyone pays? Do you go out and take a loan? This council consciously went to borrowing zero dollars when I was on here before. Consciously said, we will no longer borrow money, we will only do projects if we have the cash. Came back to bite us in our road program because you didn't have the income to, to do it. My concern is, you've gotta stop and think, it is a mon- monetary impact in your household. But if I can't drive to and from my house, and the kids surrounding me can't get to school because the roads are so bad that the buses are having problems, you gotta take pride in your community. And I'm in support of this, even though I'm gonna have to pay for it. And my road's been done several years ago. It hopefully won't be touched again for another 10 to 20 years. That's what this is, is to get us on a program of 10 years to 20 years. And I, I guess I'd have to say, we had two issues again that were before council. They both had the exact same process, except this one includes stormwater. And why does it include stormwater? Cause we can't keep ignoring it because bad stormwater impacts your roads. We have people who are underwater, do we just say, we'll fix your road, but we're not worried about your water? And we know NEOSRD is gonna help, but if you look at the NOSRD program that was put in the newspaper, there was nothing in some accounting. They're still talking about the projects they talked to us about five to seven years ago, all in Cuyahoga County. And we have to go before them to be blessed, to get the money and show that we have the money to be able to pay for it. And I think it's a reimbursement program, so it's kinda like this double-edged sword. I think what I'd like to hear, if you have a question and don't wanna pay for it, how do you think we should do the roads then? Give me another idea. And I know that Nick has said that before, where do we find 10 million? And I'll be glad to look at that as an option. And I think you had Mrs. Loyah.
Hi, good evening, um, Kathy Loyah, 9186 North Bedford Road. Um, thanks so much for this forum. I think it's great that we, the citizens, can come and have a conversation about this very important topic. Um, I am concerned about stormwater, as all of you know, um, through the years, talking about my property and the North Bedford and Ledge area, and the stormwater that we have there. And to Mrs. Tully's point, as far as a stormwater, uh, fix for our area, really has nothing to do with the roads. And I understand we're all now being assessed our wonderful stormwater fee through NEOSRD, and they've had this program, which is reimbursement, which we do have to show that we have the money. So, we have to have the money, obviously, to do something, um, particularly in my area, which is going to be possibly, probably, a huge project. Um, city did a study last year by, uh, GPD, nobody said anything. So now NEOSRD is doing another study and call me in, maybe 2017, maybe the study will be done in 2018 about the North Bedford and Ledge area. So my question about this issue as far as the roads, and how it pertains to stormwater, what type of monies are gonna be set aside for stormwater? Is it just going to be stormwater projects affecting the roads that are going to be done? Or is money going to be set aside for those larger projects that really have nothing to do with the roads, such as the North Bedford and Ledge area?
The answer from the, uh, from our engineer was that this would be focused on road-related stormwater issues. As far as the other stormwater issues with NEOSRD, uh, we will be receiving an annual amount of, as you know, 25% of what's collected in Macedonia, somewhere in the range between 200 and 230,000, depending on the collections. We will receive and they'll get the rest. Now, my understanding was that as far as North Bedford and Ledge, that area that affects you and some other residents up there, that, uh, they are considering that, one of their larger projects, not something that we would pay for. Is that what you understood, or did you get a different answer?
I don't know, at this point.
I think she wants to know that, unfortunately, the, the money that is collected from this levy would probably not fund...
It will not do that.
It would not fund something that is as big as your project, only because it, there is another funding source for it. Um, and, and so that would be, you know, I asked that same question earlier to Joe, I mean, I asked the same question. And just to, you know, it's nothing, it's just that we have to separate somewhere what the money's gonna be spent on. And so I think that's a good, you know, if it, if it's stormwater and road related, then it can be spent, like, you know, the one example was if something broke and the road needed fixed because of the water, then it would be able to use, be in an emergency situation. But projects that are planned and, or, you know, that need engineering and all that are probably gonna be separated out of it.
And that totally makes sense, because if you're gonna be replacing the road, you need to look at the pipes that are underneath to make sure that it can maintain and manage the water that is now currently flowing, not based on models 10, 20 years ago. So, that I totally agree with. Um, my concern is for those larger stormwater projects, that the city has money to show NEOSRD that, hey, yes, we've got a plan for this. Hey, yes, this is what we're going to do. Hey, yes, this is how we can fund it. Hey, yes, send us our money.
I think there might be some confusion about this, because the money that we have to have in order to start the project is, uh, you know, they have several items in a project. There will be several pieces of projects, starting with engineering, then, uh, some materials and, you know, all that kinda thing. It'll be four or five items. And we have to have the total amount of money available in that, in that fund, which is our, called our, our, uh, local or our community share fund.
Community cost share.
We have to have the total amount of money, for example, we do have to have the total of money in their fund for us to proceed. We can't say, oh, we're gonna get some more money in the fund later. So we have to have money, that is, NEOSRD controls that money, but they, they determine[1780.66] So we have to have money, that is NEORSD controls that money, but they, they determine that we have that money. And right now, we've got 109,000, except now we've spent 59,000 on, apparently on, and been approved for the Iroquois Run project. So, we have to have the money in the fund, but once we have that money, we're still going to have to probably front some money because they're going to reimburse us by, not for the whole project, but by step in the project.
Right.
So we would have to begin with having some money to pay for engineering, otherwise we wouldn't be able to do it.
And that's just looking at.
Yeah, but, but we don't need the total money for everything in our budget to be able to do that. We needed to have it in their fund, though.
Right.
Is there a, I mean, it's news to me, there is an account called the Share Fund with NEORSD.
Yeah, let me, let me perhaps clarify some of this. And I guess the best way I can explain it is, we all pay the stormwater management fee.
Right.
Sewer District collects the money. It basically goes into two accounts. 75% of the money goes into the regional account, you're probably somewhat familiar with this. 25% goes into the community cost share account. Community cost share account is the account, the process you were just describing. And those are for, I guess, what I would call local stormwater projects. Projects that do not fall within the regional system. The regional system being defined basically as any area that has a drainage area of 300 or more acres. Indian Creek is in the regional system.
And that's why her project is.
That is correct, yes. So, any stormwater improvements that would happen in the regional system get paid for out of the regional account, not Macedonia's specific community cost share escrow account.
Right.
So, hopefully that clears up a little bit of the confusion. And for the regional account, it's not a situation where we have to have the money in the escrow and we have to apply for it and we have to front the money and then get refunded. The regional account is totally controlled by NEORSD.
Turns another, I'm sorry.
No, that's, it's, for your example, your house. They may come back in 2018 and say, it's not a regional problem.
Right.
It doesn't expand beyond the county line, doesn't expand beyond the city line, so therefore you Macedonia own the problem. The two that we heard about, Big Creek and then the one in Euclid, those are on their plans. Those are regional, because Big Creek goes for so long on the west side, the Euclid side goes for so long. So that's the toss of the dice we have with our area. Is if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet within their parameters, it will fall on us to do it. Now, the expense that we're already doing, council purchased that house for that reason. Therefore, it's a priority to create what we set out to do. When council said, we're going to purchase this house to create a retention basin, you've got to do it.
Right.
You've got an empty property. You've got neighbors saying, what's happening with this? That's why, that's the first shot at the money. With that project, though, because it's internal, we had to show the plans, get it approved, get the money, or we pay the money, and then they write us the check. Very similar to fixing streetlights and hydrants and water main breaks, Karen. Similar process. We do it, we pay for, we get reimbursed. So that's where that money is. But my concern is your project, we're now not going to know until another two years.
Right, they have to do another study on the situation.
Kind of leads me to my next question. Is there a, a way that we can lobby, or do they meet in a public forum, the NRSD, that we can have representatives that, that could go there?
Thursdays at noon, I think, everybody's in.
We do have representatives there, it's just that we don't vote.
Who is Macedonia's representative?
Well, there, there is this, from this area, from Summit County, but we don't have any voting power.
Right, and that's my concern too, is I understand that we're, my area is being considered a regional issue, yet nobody from Summit County serves on the board. None of the projects are geared toward Summit County. And Summit County is basically, in my opinion, we're just going to be a slush fund for everything that's going to be happening in Cuyahoga County. And we have real problems here.
That's certainly possible.
And an area is being designated as a regional issue, you know, you know.
I don't know, the, the letter that went out and said this is a regional issue as opposed to, let's say, Iroquois Run or the Guadalupe issue or whatever. They are, they are saying that Indian Creek is a watershed and therefore, and is affecting this whole region. Is that what it is, Joe, or what is it?
Yeah, the, the definition of the regional system is the amount of acres that drains to that point.
So it's not crossing lines or anything?
No, 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 that's, that's really the whole point of the stormwater regional fee program. Is when it rains, the water doesn't know where the property line is, it doesn't know where the county line is, it doesn't know where the city line is. It's a regional problem, so they're trying a regional approach to fix it.
It's called the Northeast Ohio Region.
Regional, correct.
Not just a cutout.
Yes.
What are we meeting with, representative from the NRSD?
Right, but we're not going to know until.
October, I believe.
Until they study the study again.
Yeah, they are coming in, I thought it was October?
Yeah, and, and to your point, regional sewer district people, I believe are scheduled to be here is October 7th.
Whatever our first meeting in October.
Yeah, whatever the first meeting is in October, I forget the exact date. And I've heard that it'll be the Director himself and one or two of his, I guess we'll call them top lieutenants.
Right, right.
We're looking forward to hearing from them.
Our watershed manager, you know, will be.
I, I'm sure that she will be here as well, Rachel, yeah, I'm sure she'll be here. And then, the 13th, okay, thank you, Rhonda. So, and then a, as far as the voting power is concerned, and this has come up a couple of times too. I, I guess I'll try and clarify and, and Chach, the Director of the Sewer District, probably clarified as well. The Board is made up of seven people. One of whom is appointed by Cuyahoga County, Armand Buddhist, she gets to appoint one guy. Three people are appointed by the municipality and the district that has the biggest population, Cleveland.
Right.
The other three Board members are appointed by what's called SCOG, which is the Suburban Council of Governments.
Right.
Which we are a part of that. Our mayor is one of the mayors in that council. That council, as a whole, elects three people, the final three people to be on the Board. Now, you know, at this point, none of the mayors from, from Summit County are on the Board.
Right.
In fact, the, the three mayors actually escape me exactly who it is. But it is possible that it could be Nieves, Miglerini and Buschera someday.
I would doubt that. The majority of those cities and towns are in Cuyahoga County. I'm guessing they're not going to be throwing us a bone by electing our mayor or someone else's mayor. It's, it's Richfield and it's, we've got a couple of townships here that also are.
Sagamore Hills is in the district, part of Hudson, actually, is.
Yeah.
A few other communities in Summit County, sure.
Right.
Well, I don't want to take up the rest of this forum about, you know, this NEORSD issue, but as far as the roads issue and, and understanding that stormwater will be addressed at the time of the roads, I think is obviously a very smart and, you know, no-brainer if you ask me, so.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Keep in mind too, part of the preventative maintenance may address some of your issues. That's, you know, the catch basins, curb repairs, I mean, those can all tie in. This, this is all not just exclusive, just being in a road, that may affect.
And even if it's looked at as far as the pipe that goes under North Bedford to where our water exits.
That's on here. That's, that's part of what we have on the maintenance list, so.
Right.
This is all part of that, so.
Right. Thank you so much for your time.
It's similar to what we did at 82 in Bedford. If you remember how that used to look with the old post office and that, and how it was changed so that it had a deeper channel and it actually addressed, we were having water issues and it really addressed that on a local basis. There was also part, we've had meetings with the Tinker Watershed, as well as ours, all the way down to Boston Heights. So maybe something that we need to pull all of those people back together. But for this one, that was internal. And that's where I think maybe that's what we need to do again. But we have to have the money.
Well, thanks again, appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening, Jeremy Dillendickus, I live over on Mid Court. Appreciate everyone extending their evenings here to past 8:30 now for 14 people. So thank you very much for everyone being here. I have some just really easy beginner questions, so I, I apologize to the crowd if everyone already knows these answers. When we look at the million dollars, 80% is from non-residents and 20% is from residents.
Right.
Of that 20%, how much is a cost shift? I work in Akron, I get charged 2.25%. I'm assuming the 2 in that 2.25 comes here, the 0.25 stays in Akron.
Yes.
So if we, so how many other people are like myself, where it's just a cost shift of money? I'm not paying any more if we go to 2.25.
The 1,290 are not affected. You're not affected because you're in a 2.25% or higher community already.
Right.
So 1,290 are not affected.
What is that, what is that in dollars? I'm looking at it, it's a million dollars per year. $800,000 is paid by someone else. $200,000 is paid by Macedonia residents. And of that 200,000, there's a portion like myself where we're just getting money back from other communities.
Right.
That shouldn't have it to start with, it should be here. I live here, I work somewhere else.
The individuals that pay income tax money that live in Macedonia, I'm assuming are these individual filers and that's less than a million dollars that we get from our residents. Now, we do have some of the tax that is from withholding, that is from our residents because they do work here as well. So, that's 621,000.
So about 60?
That comes from our residents.
So if I did the math, again, $200,000 coming from our residents, about 60% of that would be a tax increase because they work in the city of Macedonia. So if I was kind of doing the flow chart, a million to 200,000 to 120,000.
Right.
So 120,000 is new and 80,000 is shifted. So a million dollar, a million dollar tax levy, and really it's only $120,000 of new taxes to our.
But don't forget that could change too, if some of our residents.
It will change, because Akron and Cleveland go to 2.5%.
If it, if it passes.
Right.
Right.
But right now, if they didn't pass, it really is only $120,000 of new taxes. And help me with this one too. If we assess, how does that million get split? It's residents and businesses based on property tax?
If it's assessed, then I'm pretty sure it goes on to your property tax bill and it's over a 20-year period.
There's three different ways under the revised code that an assessment can proceed. And the most common is based on square footage or frontage of your property. But it really depends on which way council would decide to proceed.
But there should be a portion that's paid by businesses in Macedonia and residents in Macedonia, correct?
Yes.
So what percent would be paid by businesses in Macedonia versus residents in Macedonia?
Jeremy, assessment is a bad word right now, we don't want to use it.
I understand.
We don't have all the answers on that, but I understand where you're going, is that at some point we have to see as a reality to fix our roads.
Right, I think where I'm heading with this is, we need to pass the levy. It's only $120,000 of new taxes.
Well, it, it actually affects all the businesses also. And the numbers from the businesses are significant.
It will, it will affect close to 6,000 people who file taxes. So even though it's a, it's a small portion, they have to realize what portion of that is actually coming out of their, their own wallets. And on a $100,000 salary, it is $250 per year.
Right.
Right, it just seems like if we had to go to an assessment, we'd be leaving 80K on the table, which is this cost shift from other communities that already have it. It's probably even more.
It's that, and then, you know, if other communities decide to go to 2.25, we would be losing.
It's even higher.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, you have to, you know, check out your own finances. And, you know, and think, does this money that is earmarked going to the roads or the rec center, is it worth my dollar? And I hope most people say yes, because it is giving back to the community. It's not going into any other fund. It is going into a fund that is designed to give right back to, to them. So even though it might not be the road that's paved right away, you already heard the preventative measures are going to keep the road up, upkeep across Macedonia. So, you know, that's why I support it, you know, it's just, it makes sense. When you look at it from different angles, other than how much money is coming out of my wallet. You know, it, it, you know, overall, you know, I think you get bang for your buck. You're going to get something for the money that you're going to be, be assessed or, you know.
I presume, I presume we're getting money for, we're getting something for what we're spending generally.
It seems like a lot of bang for the buck when you can raise it a quarter, get a million dollars, and really only 120,000 is coming from your, your citizens.
Right, I would love to look at it that way and hope other people do, but it's still, each individual, 6,000 individuals are going to be affected.
Right.
So people who live in Macedonia.
But if we assess that as well.
But I understand where you're coming from, is that that money could be a lot more if they are assessed in the years to come.
Right, and that's my point.
Yeah, the median household income is $81,000 in Macedonia.
So, okay.
But.
Is that the household income or individual? Anyone else?
Well, wrapping up with this, keep in mind, and this is the most important thing that our engineering department brought up, this brings our head above the water. We're not trying to solve all the problems. We know that we're trying to be realistic about it. This brings our head back up above the water and starts the process to show we're doing our due diligence to repair these roads. So keep that in mind when you're thinking about this. And thank you. We're adjourned.
I don't get to finish? That was good, I hope people have it.